All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Oyster River Cooperative School District Candidates Night. I am Bill Leslie, your host for this evening. Tonight, we have an opportunity to learn a little more about those individuals running for school board here in your district. Here tonight, sitting at the table with me are Tom Newkirk from Durham. Tom? Carl Piedmont from Madberry.
Carl?
Good evening.
And Kenny Rotner from Durham. Kenny. We also want to thank the Middle School PTO for sponsoring and organizing this event and providing refreshments. The format for the evening will be as follows. Each candidate will have an opportunity to give a two-minute opening statement introducing themselves and why they want to be elected to serve you as your school board member. After the opening statement, each candidate will be asked a question, and will have the opportunity to either respond for one minute or not answer the question. At the end of each category of questions, I will ask the audience here for any comment they wish to make on what they just heard. You can either write the comment down on a note card or go to the podium and make your comment, whatever is most comfortable for you. The categories for tonight's questions are as follows: general questions on school board membership, student population decline/tuition, drugs and violence. There will then be a 10-minute open discussion on the quality of education within the district. This is a slightly new twist to the traditional format. School systems are in the business to provide a quality education to students, so this topic deserves an open and honest discussion. It is somewhat unsettling that there are no questions submitted in advance of this evening on the quality of education. I will start this open discussion by reading a statement and give any candidate here tonight the opportunity to respond. We are encouraging the audience to engage in this discussion as well. We would ask that members of the audience, please go to the podium to be recognized. You will be acknowledged, and then you can begin your response. There needs to be some control over this open discussion to ensure that everyone's individual voice gets heard, so we would ask that you respect those that are speaking and speak only when recognized. At the conclusion of this open discussion, each candidate will have the opportunity to give a one-minute closing statement on why you should elect them to serve you as your school board member. Any questions? Okay, let's get started. Okay, first question, and what I'll do is I'll start with Carl, gets asked the first question, and then Tom, and then Kenny would respond, and then the second question, I would start with Tom, so that Carl's not always asked the same, the first question.
No opening statements, or?
Yes. Two-minute opening statement, Carl.
I was wondering that same thing. My name's Carl Piedmont. I live at 8 Sarah Paul Hill over in Madberry, and we've lived in the area for now a little bit, over two years. My lovely wife, Amy, my son, Al, daughter Samantha, and then I have two older ones, one in college, Austin, and my oldest daughter lives down in Texas, Megan. School board has always interested me, even when we used to live back in Indiana. Both my parents were school teachers, kind of came up through the system, respected immensely what both my parents did for a living, actually even dabbled in some student teaching and a little bit of that after I got out of college as well, but back then, didn't want to do what my parents did. But looking back now, I wish I would have. It's a fun thing to do, teaching kids, watching kids grow, and teaching our future down the road. The reason I want to run for school board, I believe that I'm a very fair person, I listen, I think things through, I don't make hasty decisions, I learn from the people around me. My opinion may not always be correct, the gentleman next to me's opinion may not always be correct, but I think the school board is a team, and I think as a team, we can see Oyster River grow and become better, five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road. Obviously, I have a vested interest with the two kids in the school system. Al going to be going to the high school next year, and Samantha moving up to the middle school. I do have a lot to consider and want to bring a lot to the table. New to the area, but I think that's good. I think I can bring a lot of new views, new interests, kind of see things differently, along with, you know, learning how it's been done over the years and making Oyster River a very successful school district.
Thank you, Carl. Tom?
I'm Tom Newkirk. I was the vice chair in the school board this year. I've been a Durham resident since 1987, and I've taught at the university for the last 36 years. I'd like to say, and both of, all three of my children went through the Oyster River district, and they got such a good education that they were admitted to ridiculously overpriced schools and had a great experience there, and were well-prepared for that. I'd like to just say two things, one about kind of what my life is as a college professor, because I think it relates to my interest in school issues. Issues of literacy, working with Ralph and Heidemann, and issues of early writing, particularly writing at the college level, where I've directed the first-year writing program at UNH. So things like, what I've done the last three or four weeks are recovering the tapes from Don Graves' great study on writing that really transformed elementary education. We located them in Morrel Hall, and we've re-digitalized them, and are going to make those available to teachers, along with some of his writing, to recover this great work that's been done in New Hampshire. And some of it was done at Mast Way, the connections with reading and writing, so to kind of recover that great history. So that's really part of my professional life, that I'm on every day, almost every hour of every day. I'd just say a word about the last year with the school board. I mean, it feels really different this year than last year, and I'd like, I don't think that it's been a good year with the school board. Things have calmed down, and I'd like to just pay credit to our chair, Maria Barth, who I think has done a great job. I'd like to say that I think the previous, the school board members have continued to have done a terrific job, and I think that we've been able to accomplish things in terms of economically, in terms of energy savings, and I think, hopefully, we can get into some of the issues that we're going to be dealing with, which I think the issue of tuitioning, which is going to be a major issue, is one that's, I think, the biggest issue this school board will face in the coming year.
Thank you, Tom. Kenny?
Hi. My name's Kenny Rotner, and thank you, Bill, for moderating, and thanks for everyone for coming and everyone who's watching. Just for background information, my wife, Tracy Schrader, and I moved to Durham in 1986, and I've been a family physician in the community for that length of time, and I do see a family doctor as being an educator. I really feel that that's a real tie to schools. We have a daughter, Emma, who went through Oyster River from kindergarten, graduated last June, and is now in college and doing very well. And I'm interested in being on the school board, because I really support public education, and I think that the public education that we give to our children is probably one of the greatest gifts that we give to them. I think for the children to be able to accomplish whatever they want in this society, in this world, however grandiose their ideas are, whatever their passions are, the foundation is that public education. And I witnessed, through my daughter going to school, what I thought was a really wonderful education, and I feel the desire to really pay back to this community for all that the schools have offered to us and what the community has offered to us. I think our schools are really, really good. I think that the schools can and need to be better. I also think that financially, this is a very tough time. I think that all of us are struggling with tax loads, and I think that we really need to make decisions that make our schools affordable for everybody. I think we need to maintain that quality, and we need to make our schools affordable. I think there's some very big challenges, and I look forward to trying to face those challenges, and as a community, to try to come to some solutions. I think the declining enrollment is something we face, and our desire to maybe equalize the number of students in our elementary schools are big issues.
Great. Thank you, Kenny. Okay, first question goes to Tom. What are your priorities for the next three years as a school board member? How will you address these?
Well, I think the first issue that's going to face us almost immediately is the issue of tuitioning and students. And I know you're going to have some questions on that later, but what do we want our high school to be? Should the high school, should we tuition students, or the high school become something in the order of 900 students comparable to Sal Hagan and Hollis Brookline? What advantages would we have? What disadvantages do we have? I think that's going to face us right up front. Okay? I think, as Kenny mentioned, I think the issue of, and it's related to the tuitioning issue, the just, the cost, you know, you know, it's, you know, the cost of 17,000 per student for the high school, I think that's going to be an issue. And I think facilities, you know, we have $4 million in facilities needs, and I think how we're going to do that, what's the order of doing that, that's going to be facing us right up front. So I think these are almost issues of, not the three years, I think these are going to be issues we're going to have to face in the beginning of this year.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Kenny?
I agree with a lot of what Tom said of the issues we're facing. I think at the high school, facing the declining enrollment that is coming in the years to come, that we really are at a time where we can't stand still. If we don't do something, we're not going to be able to afford the programming that we currently have. And I think the need to tuition students is something that might allow us to keep that programming, and that's a decision, I think, very, very important. I think it's one that we really need a lot of community input on as well, because I think it's really defining where our schools will be. I'm currently on a strategic planning, future search committee that is hoping to come up with a strategic plan. I think that that is something that's really important for our schools moving forward. Addressing the capital improvements in our school as well are something that we're going to need to do.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Carl?
The whole issue with declining enrollment and bringing in other, you know, tuition students into the market, I think it has to be more than just a three-year goal or a five-year. I think we have to look at where, you know, where the market's going to be, you know, five, seven, 10 years down the road as well, because I think if you sit back and you rest on your loyals as the enrollment declines, before you know it, the costs are obviously going to go up, and, you know, being a taxpayer in the area, you know, times are tough for a lot of people right now. You know, so I think it's something that needs to be addressed and looked at, and hopefully come up with a long-term goal with it as well, and not just a short-term fix.
Great. Thank you, Carl. Okay, the next question goes to Kenny first. What do you think the role of the school board is in ensuring that policies and procedures are followed by the administration? Please give specific examples the school board does or should consider doing.
Well, I think that one of the main functions of the school board is to write policy. Other functions are hiring the superintendent and then passing a budget which gets presented to the community. The current school board has been very active in reviewing policies and updating them, rewriting them, which are brought to the board, and I think that's been a very positive experience. As for a concrete example of the board talking to administration about policy, I can't think of one where the administration has gone outside of policy and was called on it.
Thank you. Carl?
Looking from, I mean, from a policy standpoint, obviously, you know, a lot along lines with what Kenny said was, you know, managing the superintendent, hiring superintendents, but, you know, basically implementing and just making sure that the policies are in place. And I think policies, from time to time, do need to be addressed, they need to be updated. Obviously, times have changed over the years, you know, maybe when a lot of the policies were written, and specifically, you know, addressing those and making sure the communication level is there, not only between the superintendent, but between the school board members as well, and, you know, looking at what it's going to be and where it needs to be, and hopefully do what's best, not only for the community, but, you know, the students and everybody involved.
Thank you, Carl. Tom?
As Kenny mentioned, we've been very meticulous about going through policies this year, and I'm sure that those of you watched on television, it's been fascinating television to watch us go through, and believe me, it's been thrilling up here. I think it's been good, though, because I think it's reacquainted us with the policies, looking through them and making sure that they're in line with the state recommendations for policies. So I think that's been, if not always, a fascinating exercise, I think a healthy one. And I think, you know, we had some orientations early on, and they said, your job is to maintain, is to, policy is a huge part of the school board's job, and I think that there's a, it was a little bit of a learning curve for me, that, you know, you come in and you might think you want to change this pedagogical thing, and really, the school boards, the school board's out of remove from that, and I think it needs to be disciplined. And I really think the board has been disciplined in that way this year, that you don't, you know kind of what your role is, and you don't step outside that role. So I think, I think that's been a positive thing.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, next question goes to Carl first. The district has recently started work again on a strategic plan. What is the role, does a strategic plan play in a school district?
I think it plays, I mean, it plays a major role. I mean, the strategic plan, again, what I addressed earlier, that not looking at short-term fixes, you need to look at, you know, where we want to be five, 10, 15 years down the road. And, you know, from a school board member, you know, implementing policies and staying to them, and directing the school system, not only how, you know, we feel it should go, but obviously the community, the teachers, the students, and what's going to be best for the community. But the strategic plan is just that. I mean, it is a plan, and what's going to benefit the school system from the most from an educational standpoint, financial standpoint, and what's going to be the long-term goal and best for everybody involved.
Thank you, Carl. Tom?
Yeah, I'll just give one example of where I think that we probably maybe should have had a plan and didn't have a plan, and are kind of catching up for not having a plan, and I think that's with technology, that I think that we, you know, made a lot of purchases of equipment that use digital technology, but we haven't done enough with the infrastructure. So one of the questions we had this morning at the high school is this, the slowness of everything, because it's almost like we've, you know, encouraged everybody to buy cars, but we haven't made the roads for the cars to run on. And so, so I think that's an example where a strategic plan, thinking through where should we be with technology, you know, and not just make decisions and make decisions, because some of those decisions, you know, are not wise, or they're not thought out in a long-term way. So I think that's one area where we maybe suffered from not having a strategic plan.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom.
I think a strategic plan is really crucial. I think a strategic plan and the formulation of one allows for the community to be involved, and really, we want our schools to reflect the community, and I think that having a strategic plan drawn up by a community lets our schools reflect that. The strategic plan, as our vision and philosophy statement that was adopted last year, really sets out what we want our schools to be in a general term, and then by filling in the details behind that vision and philosophy statement, we know how to allocate resources. So we've talked about how spending is an issue, cost is an issue. Having a strategic plan, I believe, helps us to use those financial resources as intelligently and as frugally as we can.
Thank you, Kenny. Okay, the next question is from the audience, and this goes to Tom first.
Okay.
Last year, the board reduced our right to know, such as no requirement to publish on the web, in shortened notice time from one to three days. Do you agree these should be restored to what they were?
I'm not sure I have a strong opinion on that. My sense is the board has been open and has gained, and has been providing information to the community, and I don't, haven't heard instances where the community's felt like the information's been withheld, or has not been provided on a ready basis, so I guess I don't see a need for this restoration. It seems to me we've been open, we've been clear, we've been transparent, so I would say, I'd say that we're okay.
Thank you, Tom. Kenny?
I would concur with Tom. At this time, I feel that the board has acted in a way where their business is done in public, that the community is not challenging the board in a way to get information, because that information is provided, and I think that the system that has now been set up with how the board is operating is working very well, and I think the public is well-informed.
Thank you. Carl?
And I'm probably a little unclear exactly what you're looking for on this one, but I mean, I would think that the school board, you know, it's televised, it's open to the public. I think people have the opportunity to come in and listen and hear and learn. I don't think anything's being hid from what I've gathered, talking with people the last couple of weeks. I think the school board is doing a great job and heading in the direction that they need to head.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Okay, the next question goes to Kenny first. Do you support differentiated instruction and heterogeneous grouping? Why?
I strongly support differentiated, I strongly support differentiated instruction. I went to school in a district where the classes were striated, and there were kids that were in upper-level classes and kids that were in, I guess they were ranked by ability, and it became a self-fulfilling prophecy. Kids that were in classes where not much was expected of them did not perform well, did not engage education, resented education, and I think that was a very, very destructive system. I think by having differentiated instruction, where we more blend our kids in classes, it allows people to really reach their full potential, and I think that that's really what the goal of our school is. And rather than labeling someone as being not up for it, this allows everyone to move to that position.
Kenny? Carl?
Again, I mean, being raised in a household with two teachers, I used to hear it both sides of the coin growing up, but I think that there has to be a happy medium, there has to be a good balance between, you know, who's being taught in what classes. I think you do reach a certain point, probably in high school, when you're preparing for college classes, you know, that honor classes and AP classes and things like that should be offered to benefit the kids that know they're going to college, that want to go to college. But to differentiate classes, I think there needs to be a happy blend, there needs to be a happy mix, and the teachers need to, you know, direct their classes that are going to keep those, all levels of children in their classroom interested, and have them reach their full potential, their maximum potential.
Thank you, Carl. Tom?
I would agree with Kenny that the, if you have a rigid tracking system, the statistics on that, those who placed in the low track never get out, they're locked into that forever. One of my students, UNH wrote a book called Lifers, and Lifers was about people who get in those low tracks and just never get out, they're in for life, and it's a dangerous system. I think there's a perception sometimes that, say, in the middle school, that the heterogeneous grouping holds back, say, the better students. And I talked to Jay Richard about that, and he says, if you go in there and look at just the level that those classes are looking at, and look at the test scores, just look at what the, what the level of those classes are, it's, they're operating in a very, a very high level. And I think I'd agree with Carl, that in high school, you'll have classes that may place different demand, so you might have a sense, maybe a self-selection of, you know, that if you're going to take an advanced expository writing, it's going to be a really demanding course, is that the level of demand that you want to take? So that you're not necessarily tracking the kids, but you're like, maybe giving courses of different intensity and different demand, and then students might find the level that's appropriate for them with good guidance.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, the next question is from the podium. Dean Ruben Lee has a question on Warren Article V, and this will go to Carl first.
Yes, you'll recall, Warren Article V is setting up the reserve fund, which the state now allows us to put our fund balance, or part of it, every year into a fund up to 2.5%, which I think is around $1 million for us. So my question is to you guys, do you, will you vote yes or no on this article? And if yes, what would be your policy for how much, at the end of the year, you would plan to set aside into this fund?
You know, honestly, I have to answer that that's something that I would have to look into a little bit more. I'm not overly familiar with that one, so I basically am going to have to pass on answering that in a good sense.
Great. Tom?
I strongly support that Warren article, and I think that that would allow us to build a fund balance that had we had, say, that $1 million in that fund balance this year, we would, I think, I mean, I can't speak for the board, but certainly I would have supported putting that to moderate the tax increase in the coming year. I think the 4.5, you know, for a lot of reasons, which we may get into later. It's interesting, there's no budget questions, since we spent so much time on it. But if we would have had that, you know, Dean, if we would have had that $1 million fund balance and said, rather than have, to put that toward the, to moderate the tax increase for next year, so rather than like 4.5%, there might be 3.5%, we might do that. Or if there's a major emergency, a roof caves in, God forbid, and you have to spend that money, you have a kind of fund that you can deal with that. So I think, I think for a lot of reasons, it's good, and a lot of, you know, towns have that kind of fund, a lot of, you know, businesses have some reserve funds, so I think it would be a good thing for us to have.
I agree with Tom that I strongly support that Warren article. This year, the state funding that came to our district was cut substantially, primarily for funding of retirement funding. That really made creating a budget very, very difficult this year. The objective was to come in with a flat budget, and the attempts were really made to do that, but it was an uphill fight because of that funding that we had to cover that wasn't coming from the state. So having that reserve fund balance gives the district the cushion when situations like that arise, or if something catastrophic that really needs immediate attention arises as well.
Thank you, Kenny. Okay, the next question goes to Tom first. With the increased focus on the STARS testing and other standardized testing, as well as the focus on core curriculum, some educational freedom has been lost. How do you balance the needs of educating and inspiring all children with a desire for high test scores?
Interesting question. I've never been a great fan of standardized tests. I think the first article I wrote when I was at the University of Texas was like questioning standardized tests, so it's never been one of my favorite things. And I was alarmed to learn that the Smarter Balanced Test that's going to be given in two years, the writing for that, will all be scored by machines, it won't even be read by a human being. And so I think that's, it's disturbing the way this testing is going, and I do support some of the goals of the Common Core. You know, I wrote a book called The Art of Slow Reading, so intensive reading, repeated reading, reading of nonfiction, a lot of the goals I'm in favor of. I think that the real question will be the test, and what that test does, and whether that test drives instruction, and how that test drives instruction. If that becomes kind of, the kind of force that just shapes instruction, and I think that, particularly in this district, would be a shame.
Thank you, Tom.
I too am troubled by standardized testing as being the metric that defines a school district. I feel that standardized testing often does not reflect really the sort of underlying strengths that a district might have, the intangibles. I think our district is very strong, and I think that the way Common Core is being incorporated into our district is that we're looking at what we are doing, and we're seeing that so much of what we're doing is what is necessitated by Common Core, and so rather than having to change our school to be Common Core, we're able to see how we're, how our practices have already incorporated some of the things that are being asked. I think that our curriculum needs to remain strong and should not focus on teaching just to a test, and I think that we are able to do that with the strength of our teachers.
Thank you, Kenny.
I would have to agree with both the gentlemen here as well. Standardized testing, you have a standardized test to a student in New Hampshire that could have been written by a group of people in California, or Texas, or Montana. The test score results may not be a reflection of the students and how they have been taught and their strong points in English or math, or anything else that the standardized testing is going to look at. I think you have to have some flexibility. I think you need to be able to teach, I'm a big believer on, you know, not always testing, but a hands-on philosophy in teaching the kids. Every kid's going to be a little different, every kid's going to learn in a different manner, and, you know, to have one standardized test for every student, I don't really agree with that at all.
Thank you. Okay, the next question goes Kenny first. How do you weigh the balance between fiscal responsibility and educational needs? What specific steps would you propose to reduce the tax burden on our community?
We've touched on that a little bit already tonight. I think having that strategic plan in place will help us allocate our I think having that strategic plan in place will help us allocate our resources more effectively. I think the board in the last year, and I guess really the last year and a half, have moved for that fiscal responsibility. The early retirement incentive that was offered to teachers and others in the district, I think that has realized the savings in our budget this year, and the savings will be even bigger last year. This year, we had to pay that incentive. Next year's budget won't have that incentive. I think also the recommissioning of this building has made the energy use so incredibly more efficient that the cost of our maintaining the building, or cost of facilities is down. And I think that's something that we should keep working towards as well.
Thank you, Kenny. Carl?
Yeah, I think the green aspect of it, I mean, you know, if you can save, if you can save money, help the environment along the way, I think that's a good thing. The overall fiscal responsibility, like Kenny said, I mean, it is, it goes back to the strategic plan and, you know, where we need to be and where we want to be in three, five years, 10 years down the road. And, you know, with declining enrollment and, you know, higher costs, it's something that certainly needs to be looked at. I think the school board members can do a positive thing in that, in the school as well. But, you know, it's got to, it's got to be what's going to be best for the community and everybody involved on, you know, where we need to be with this down the road.
I believe that one of the most difficult and most important things the board did this year was the retirement incentive, and we eliminated 11 positions, which I think is unprecedented in this, without, you know, pink slipping anybody. It's unprecedented in this district. And I think that that was done in a sensitive and cooperative way with the leadership team. So I think that was a major achievement. I think that whether we have a retirement incentive another year, second year, that would be a question the board would have to address. And I think the teacher's contract, I mean, you might as well say it, the teacher's contract is going to be a big issue. I think between the tuitioning of students and the teacher contract, I think those are the two fiscally biggest issues we're going to face. And health, health costs, and, you know, what percentage people pay for health costs, those are going to be some questions and, you know, decisions and negotiations that are going to go on that I think will have a major effect on, fiscally. So those would be some things.
Great. Next question goes to Carl first, and I think we're transitioning sort of into the student population decline slash tuition, but this question may overlap into a general question. Since it is clear that we will need some form of redistricting, how would you identify the changes and make that determination?
On the redistricting, I guess that it's probably looking at, I would imagine with Newmarket closing and a couple of the schools in the area. I think you have to take a look at, you know, what Oyster River can handle, I mean, as number of students, you know, what we're built for, where do we want to be? And take a look at that and then weigh out the financial costs of it as well. And bringing other students in, I mean, obviously with the declining enrollment that is obviously on everybody's mind, I don't think the school can afford to keep losing students. I think we at least need to maintain and then hopefully grow back again. But we need to grow at a level that's not going to put a strain on the educational value of the kids in the classroom. I mean, we don't want classrooms to go from 12 students, 15 students, up to 40, just so we can fill some more seats and cut some costs. There has to be a good balance between the two.
Tom?
Yeah, I think, particularly in high school, one of the issues is the elective system. And I think if you ask any high school student what they love about Oyster River, they would say the elective system would be one thing. But looking 10 years down the road, if you just, if you just had the students from Lee and Madberry and Durham, if those are the only students in the school, the high school would be about 560 students. And I don't think you could have an elective system with, you know, certainly elective system that gives a lot of choice with so few students. So I think, you know, we need to do some, we need to tuition in students. And I think we're going to have some options. We'll know about fairly soon. Deerfield, Newmarket, Barrington, more students from Barrington. And so I think we need to look at what that transition would look like if we brought in more students from Deerfield and more students from Newmarket. Educationally, what's the linkage, the coordination between the schools, the feeder schools and our own curriculum? And what are the emotional, I think this is really important, what are the emotional issues, the social issues, the cultural issues that are going to be involved in transitioning in? You're the starting guard at Newmarket's basketball team. You come here, what happens? Those things are going to be really important. And they're not fiscal, they're maybe not even educational, but they're going to be really important.
I read this question in two ways, and maybe first way was wrong, but I think one of the things that we're talking about, as well as the balance between Moheramit and Masway. Currently, Moheramit has two modulators that cost the district money, and we certainly can save the district money if Moheramit was not overcrowded and Masway less crowded. That's been a change in the past. Masway was the school that was more crowded. So I think one is that internal redistricting, and I think that that's going to be a very complicated issue, and I think really needs to have a lot of community input and ideas on how to achieve that, so people who have a loyalty to their school still are able to feel they're in a good place. As for the high school, I think the declining enrollment is just a tremendous issue, and I believe that our elective program might not be able to be sustained if our numbers drop too low, and that's because of finances. Boy, that red one came up quick.
Go ahead. She's brutal.
I think we really want to preserve the character and the quality of our school, and I don't think just bringing in numbers to fill chairs is the answer. I think we need to bring in the numbers while preserving the quality of our schools and the choices we offer our children.
Thank you. Next question goes to Tom. And now we're on the topic of student population decline slash tuition, so there may be some overlap in the, in the questions, okay?
Okay.
Trying to get as different type of questions as possible.
Okay.
Our district is facing declining enrollments in the coming years, which will result in higher per pupil costs. Can you give us some examples of the actions that you will support in terms of changes to staffing, physical plant, et cetera, to deal with this reality? Can you also comment the possibility of bringing in students from other districts, which may already done?
Well, I think that's, the tuitioning of students is one way in which, you know, we've talked about that a little bit. I think that, you know, I was thinking through the declining enrollment in the elementary schools, which would create some classroom space. And this may be controversial, we haven't talked about this much in the school, in the school board, but I think somewhere down the line, probably not in the immediate future, but the mid-future, all-day kindergarten will have to be talked about a little bit. I think that kindergarten, I think, is still at the model that it was when I was in school, that you want to kind of, you know, have two or three hours a day to socialize kids so that they go into first grade. I think what we know about early childhood education has transformed that, and that it's much more critical to have that good start. And if we do have space in the, in the elementary schools, we could transition to all-day kindergarten without, you know, we'd have the space for it. And again, I know that's controversial in the district, but I think that's a question we might need to talk about.
Thank you, Ken.
I think that the question really is different for the different schools involved, meaning elementary, middle, and high school. And I think that if we, everything really needs to be on the table. If we're looking at declining enrollment in elementary school, and there we're not really talking about programming, consolidation is an option. And I support what we did this year with the early retirements, and I think if we could gradually move to having staffing that's appropriate for the number of children, that that works. Certainly utilizing the school more, whether even bringing in pre-K, as a lot of parents in the community go elsewhere, to utilize pre-K or have full kindergarten. And the high school is the one where it's crucial, I think, that we keep up a number in order, as I said before, to keep that programming available.
Carl?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you take a look at the elementaries and the junior highs, but, I mean, again, it's the high school that seems to have the declining numbers. And what do we need to do to maintain the high school numbers as well? You know, so looking at, you know, tuitioning in other schools, I would have to say, we should take a serious consideration to it and take a look at it. I think we need to. The all-day kindergarten is, back in Indiana from where we're from, was something that they implemented years ago. And a lot of people were opposed to it, a lot of people liked it. They'd made changes along the way to maybe only do all-day kindergarten, you know, three days out of the week or four days out of the week instead of a five-day period. But they did show studies to where even the kindergarten kids were learning more in a three-day all-day session versus a five-day half-day session. So I think it's something to take a look at and see what the community feels about that. I think that's the most important thing here.
Thank you, Carl. Kenny, the next question goes to you. We brought in another district, would they tuition their students? Would you support redoing the cooperative agreement?
I for sure at first would not want to redo the cooperative arrangement. I feel that to, to bring in students is going to have a big impact on our district. And I think to see how that goes is a very, very important step. And if we change the definition of what our cooperative district is, we lose that control. And I think we really need to find out and ascertain that the fit is good, and if the fit is good and we feel that both communities have the same philosophy and are invested in the same way, I think that's when you talk about making a larger cooperative district. But I think giving up control of our district without knowing if it's a good fit and whether that community supports our goals would be a very poor idea.
I would have to agree with Kenny on that, that, you know, I don't think you want to give up the reins. I think it needs to be looked at, you know, from both sides and make sure that it is going to be a good fit. You know, the tuitioning in aspect of it, you know, if it drives the cost up for the local, you know, community, you know, that has to be studied and looked at as well. And if I'm not mistaken, it is a study that is being looked into right now, I believe. And it's going to be interesting to see what the results are on that.
Tom?
Could you say the question one more time?
Yep. If we brought in another district, would they tuition their students? Or would you support redoing the cooperative agreement?
I would agree with Kenny that I would not support, you know, you know, changing the cooperative district. I think that's a major change, and I don't, I would not support that. I think there might need to be an interim step where there's some representation, say, a non-voting member, because if you have a long-term agreement, say, a 10-, 15-year agreement with a district that's sending 250 kids, just hypothetically, I'm not saying this is what we would choose, but if that would happen, and you said, yes, but you have no representation as to, you know, on the board, you know, you're not at the table, I think that could be a bad thing. So I think that there might need to be an interim step where there is maybe a non-voting member from that district who can, who can like, you know, be a conduit, so if there's a problem, or kids feel like they're not being attended too well, that we would be able to hear that, and that there'd be a representative that would be able to convey that to us.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, next question. So this is from the audience, it's two questions from the audience, which I'll read. First one, Dean Ruben Lee. While the high school--
Who is this guy?
While the high school HVAC overhaul was very successful, the proposal for the other schools is not nearly as attractive, with a slow payoff and some controversy over whether existing controls are worth replacing. Do you support the new $700,000 HVAC project? And this goes to, to Carl.
To Carl.
Yeah, Carl. Yeah, can't tell Carl.
On a $700,000 project, I'm sure if it was looked at and needs to be done to the other schools, I don't have a lot of knowledge on that one, but I would like to think that, you know, we're not going to let our schools suffer. If something has to be, you know, fixed or rebuilt, and may not have gone as smoothly as the high school one, but it's still something that needs to be done, then I guess that, you know, we have to take a serious look at doing it and making sure that the kids or the students aren't suffering at the school, just because it may not go as smoothly as the high school one did.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, I think the high school is an extraordinary chance to, to get a payback in 1.7 years for an investment, you know, which is, you know, unheard of. I mean, so that to say that it's not going to be as good as a high school hardly, you know, that's like a poster child for, you know, a wonderful project that's almost beyond belief. I think the one that we actually voted for, so I do support that, so I voted for it on the school board, that payback is about seven years. But the way it's constructed is that the amount of energy, the amount of money, we're going to have a lease arrangement, so the amount of money we have to pay each year, will, there'll be a corresponding energy savings of that same amount, so that, so for seven years, it's going to balance out, so there'll be no net cost to the district. And after seven years, we'll have that new equipment, that new boiler at Masway. So it seems to me, although it's not the perfect arrangement that the high school had, it's a good arrangement for the district that really puts no money really expended.
Thank you, Tom. Ken?
I heard the presentation, and I believe it was Siemens who made for the work to be done at our other schools. And certainly this school really needed that work done, and it was evidenced by the savings. And it is the poster child, they're advertising it as, you know, one of their best projects. I personally, though, would need to look more into what we, what that cost is to do the other schools and what the savings will be. And I think that does tie into our strategic plan too, where we really look at, you know, what we want from our facilities. I think that I might need to look into that more before I could say yes to that.
Thank you. Next questions from the audience as well. How will you, as a school board member, support your food service director, Doris de Mares, in her farm-to-school initiative and continued procurement from local farms for the National School Lunch Program? And this goes to Tom first.
Well, Doris gave a presentation, I think was on turnips, district turnips. And, yeah, but the way in which she had infused turnips throughout the menu, and it was really quite impressive, she had to kind of highlight where all these turnips were being eaten by students. So, and I was, I mean, I'm skeptical that even, I don't think I eat a turnip until I was about 30, you know, so. And still do it reluctantly. So how would I, I mean, I think there's a sustainability article with some amount of money that would help her, would help her procure local food, and I'm fully in favor of that, so that, you know, the school, the school board voted for that. So I think that would be a start, that if, to encourage people to vote for that sustainability article, the Warren article, that has that amount of money for local procurement.
Thank you. Ken?
I think the meals at our schools have come tremendously far, way, way improved. Government-issue food, which was, really, there wasn't any cooking done in our school, and meals were, although maybe some were popular, like French toast sticks and fried mozzarella and other sorts of, who knows what they were, I think we're really doing our children a disservice.
Turnips, yeah.
As a family doctor, nutrition is, it's vital. It's something that provides, you know, when you're young, to grow, to think, to be active, to preserve your health. And I think purchasing food locally, cooking food at the schools again, is really the way to go. I think it supports our community and it supports our children.
Carl?
I think it goes to, you know, looking at the overall wellness programs that schools offer, which I think is a good thing. If you can buy local, you grow local, support the local, I think that that's a good thing. I don't think that it could, you know, take over all the school systems at this point, but if you look at, you know, starting this program small and building on it, again, kind of going back to the strategic plan, and that could be included in the strategic plan, implement it, see how it goes, see how the kids react to it. Obviously, if they don't know if they're eating turnips, they probably can't complain about eating the turnips. So.
That's a good thing, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. You know, and school lunches have changed a lot over the years. I mean, the square lunch trays that we used to have when I went to school, you know, you'd have your piece of white bread, you got chocolate milk choice on Friday, and it was pretty cut and dry. But I think we need to look at healthier choices and better ways to give nutrition to the kids in the school system.
Okay, last question on the topic of tuition, and then we're-- Okay, last question on the topic of tuition, and then we'll transition to drugs and violence. Okay, if you were a student, and this goes to Ken first, if you were a student, how would you view bringing in more students? Anything negative about that?
If I was a student at the high school and there was the talk of bringing in new students, I think I would be anxious. I think this school is a community and people kind of know where they fit into the school, whether that's socially, academically, or athletically. And I think having lots of new people come in all at once is tough. I think change is hard for all of us. And I think that it's something that, as we approach the subject of bringing in larger numbers, it's something that I think we really need to do very sensitively and really make that transition, not one where the doors open and all of a sudden there's one population that's been here, one who's never been here. I think that there might be that tendency that those two populations will stay separate. And I think it will behoove us, if we do bring in more students, to really work on integrating those two groups.
Carl?
I know my daughter Samantha over here, every time she gets a new student in her classroom, that's one of the first things she comes home and tells me, you know, she's excited about it. And I think, I think there does need to be a balance. I think, you know, when you go to a new school, obviously, you know, we've moved our kids kind of in the middle of the year, going to a new school is scary. Seeing new kids infiltrate your school, maybe looked at as outsiders. So there should be some type of a mixer program, development program, to get the two sides together. So there's not that line drawn down between, you know, the New Market Crew or whoever else, you know, might be coming to the school down the road. And what can we do to welcome them with open arms? I mean, I think that that's very, very important to make that group feel comfortable as soon as they walk in the doors and, more importantly, make them feel comfortable before they even walk into the doors.
Tom?
Yeah, I would agree with everything that's been said. I also think that if you have, like, a sense that there's a fixed number of opportunities in sports and theater, and you're going to bring in 250 students or 200 students and still keep that same number of opportunities, then you have a greater competition and I think a greater tension about, you know, the sense of diminished opportunity, you know, either for the student coming in or the student who's there. You go back to the guard, the 11th grade guard who was coming into the basketball team. So I think that part of the comprehensive package is that if you bring in more kids, you can't, it's not just a matter of seats, it's a matter of opportunity, it's a matter of chances to do things. And so that you may have to have more sports, you know, you may have to have different, you know, you may have to have more clubs, you know, you're going to have to, you can't just say, we have the seats and we're going to bring them in and that's what we need to do. So I think, I think some of the tension might come from the sense of diminished opportunity, and that's something you'd have to look at.
Okay, now we're going to transition to drugs and violence. First question goes to Carl. Surveys conducted in our district have indicated that drug use, specifically pot, at Oyster River is higher than many other schools in the state. What is your position on the school's role in addressing this problem? And are we doing enough? Or do you believe that additional steps need to be taken? If so, please explain. And will you make this one of your top priorities as a school board member?
I personally think it is, I mean, it needs to be a top priority. I think anything over zero on a drug tolerance chart is too high. You have to look at it, I think it comes from an educational standpoint, you know, as teachers, as administrators, you know, at what point and what grade level do we educate the kids on, you know, the harmful drugs that are out there? Is it the elementary school? Is it the junior highs? Is it the high school? I think it needs to be a continual program along the way. And I think that there has to be strict rules and regulations of, you know, no tolerance along the way with the drugs. But the educational part of it needs to come first, and if there's reprimand involved, then there needs to be reprimand. And again, anything over zero is too high for me.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, to go back to the wellness study, I think there are a lot of really good things in that in terms of the health of our students, so I think that should probably be mentioned as well. I have conflicted feelings about the steps you might take, because, you know, are we talking about bringing in dogs to the school, you know, to sniff out marijuana? I mean, I think that there's something about that that bothers me, you know, that kind of surveillance, that kind of, so I have conflicted feelings if that's, you know, if you're talking about practical steps that you're going to take, is that, you know, that may be open for discussion, there might be agreement, but something about me resists bringing in dogs to sniff the lockers of students, you know, that there's a certain privacy issues there and a certain sense of the climate of the school, if this is what you're doing. So I think that there's some, you know, there'll be disagreement, but taking a step like that is something I'm not comfortable with.
Tom, Ken?
I think that the student at risk that was presented by Todd Allen at a school board meeting, I think it found that really our school really was not worse than the norm and probably a lot better in many areas. As far as a drug problem, I don't think it's just a school problem. I think it's a community problem, it's a society problem, it's a national problem. And I don't think the school is the place where that problem's going to get solved. And in our district, we do lots of work. We've had dare-like programs, we spend a lot of time with the children's very early ages, talking against cigarette use, talking against drugs, talking against alcohol. And I support doing that, but unfortunately, and it's in my career as well, these programs are not very effective. And I would say that I think we really need to reach out to some of our students who are in the high school and talk to them about how to connect with them. And I remember my daughter, one day, former drug users came to the school and gave their stories. And that was like one of the first real times that that was, that that came to have an impact on her, when she really saw that. And I think we need to work on it, but I think we really need to change how we're doing it.
Great, thank you. Next question goes to Tom first. With drug use in all-time high at Oyster River, why do you think there is more focus on funding sustainability than there is towards combating drug use within the school system? The school board has yet to adequately address this major problem within the school system.
I guess I would say that, to phrase the question that way, like, these are two competing things, that you have to support one or the other. I don't necessarily agree with that contention. Should we be doing more to combat, you know, I think probably we are, and I think that probably we need to. But I think Kenny's right in that how you do it is a complicated thing, because I think kids get preached to a lot, and I think that that tends not to be effective. So I think we need to continue to work to find a way to connect with them, to educate them, but frankly, I don't have a good answer to that.
I, too, do not see the two linked. But I'd like to give an example in our town. When we first moved to the town, UNH had an open policy. And the students at UNH, everything happened in a dorm. Then UNH made a policy that the dorms could no longer have drugs and alcohol, and it all moved into the fraternities. And horrible things happened in the fraternities. Date rape, someone fell off a roof and killed themselves, and the school cracked down on the fraternities. And now it's in our neighborhoods, and anyone who lives near UNH knows that it's in their streets. And I say that in that, again, it's a community and a society problem. And I think just our clamping down on it in the school, which I think needs to be done, I don't think that solves the problem, because then kids are going to be out on the roads. And we really need to figure out a way to connect with the kids in our school to realize how they can mess their lives up.
Carl?
Yeah, I mean, I think you can overpreach the kids to where they're going to shut down and not listen to you. But I think that's also why it needs to maybe start in the elementary school, go into the middle school, and into the high school. Maybe look at a better program of how to educate young kids on drugs, you know, but the key word there is educate them, not preach at them, you know, not yell at them. But there still has to be a point of tolerance on the drugs. There is, I mean, it just has to be. I mean, I do have strong feelings about this, and, you know, what's the best way to educate the kids? I'm not sure. I mean, that's a tough one, because, I mean, if you want to do it, you're going to do it. But I don't think that it is something that should be tolerated in any level of the school systems.
Great. Next question goes to Ken first. Gun violence has impacted schools in an unimaginable way. What do you recommend to ensure safety of students in our schools?
I was incredibly impressed coming to the first school board meeting after the tragedy in Connecticut and hearing a presentation from Dr. Morse, who then brought in the principals from each school and talked about what they were doing in each of their schools to protect our children and to reassure our parents. And I think that those security systems are set up and they're in place. Certainly, there've been people throughout the country advocating arming teachers and the like, and that's not a way I would go. I think that that invites more problems. But I, just to reiterate, I feel that our superintendent and our principals were right on top of that.
Carl?
I don't think, yeah, arming teachers and having guards in the school, I mean, it just doesn't make for a comfortable surrounding. So I guess the key goes back to, I mean, how do you keep them out of the school? Metal detectors, you know, policing at the front door before it gets into the school, to me, would be a better route to go than, and to be honest with you, arming somebody with inside the school, unfortunately, things, bad things can happen with them as well. You know, the recent police officer out in California. I mean, unfortunately, things like that do happen, but we've got to educate the kids on the violence along with it, but make sure that, you know, the guns and the weapons and different things aren't getting inside the front doors.
One of the recent school board meetings, we had a presentation where we approved a number of technologies for monitoring the doors and having visual cameras so that you can see who's coming into the building. So I think that the board has taken steps to create more security and more attentiveness and observation for who comes into the school building. My sense is that this building has a lot of doors. And so to make sure that those doors are closed and monitored, this building is probably, I think, has more chances, if doors aren't kept locked, for people to come in. And I know that Todd has worked with that so that those, you know, doors aren't, you know, kept open so that people can come in, so that, so we have taken steps. It's a tragedy, and you look at what happened in Newtown and the guy shooting his way into a school, I mean, how that can be stopped, you know, it's like we can't give 100% security. But I think we have taken steps to make it more secure and more, fewer routes of access and more awareness of who's coming into the school building.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, now we're going to have an open and honest discussion, 10, 15 minutes or so, on the quality of education. So what I'll do is, I got three questions here, and I encourage the audience to certainly raise your hand, be recognized, and engage in this discussion. I'm going to just throw the question out there. Anyone can respond, first one of the candidates. And you hear something in the audience? Or you don't hear, please feel free to go to the podium and ask a question or respond. What do you define as a quality education?
I'll answer that one. I think it needs to be well-rounded. I think it's academics, I think it's sports, I think it's extracurricular activity, it's clubs, it's after-school activities. I think it needs to be a little bit of everything.
It's okay if I--
Yeah.
I think that a quality education really reflects the uniqueness of each of the children in the school system and how each child learns differently, and each child has different interests, and each child has different potential. And a quality education is one that gets that particular child to achieve as much as they can achieve, to motivate them, to give them that discipline, that drive, so that they can get as far as they can possibly get to reach their full potential.
Can I try?
Yes, sure.
I think a quality education instills habits of mind, certain ways of thinking and exploring topics. And I think one of those key habits of mind is always to look for alternatives. If you think this, how's another way of thinking this, thinking about this? So that you begin to see the world as complex, as multiple perspectives for opening topics. And so topics can always be opened and reopened and challenged, and you can challenge yourself and interrogate yourself. So one of the things that, a term coined by a student, a graduate student, she called counter discourse, that wherever the student is, can you challenge that student to think in a different way? I tell my students, wherever you are, I'm going to be somewhere else. Okay? And so then I think you begin to think differently, and I think there's an ethical dimension to that, that then you begin to see the world as diverse and there are multiple points of view that have credibility. And so you have to deal with that complex world that you can't just say, it's my view and that's the truth. So you begin to see the world as complex. And I think that's the basis of morality, to see the world as complex.
Anyone want to respond to any of the candidates?
Okay.
Oh, come on, somebody's got to be--
Joanne, there you go. Well, I, can I ask--
Sure.
I don't have a response, I have a question.
Yeah, go.
Because I'm listening to this, and, you know, it really depends, the kind of education we deliver has a lot to do with the teachers we put in classrooms. And so how do we ensure that we have teachers in classrooms, just to use your example, Tom, who are thinking themselves with that, have that habit of mind to them? And I know one of the challenges as a school board is you're not really closely involved with the hiring of teachers. So I'd love any discussion or thoughts that you have on how you can influence from a school board to maintain that we have the very best teachers in classrooms, but you can ignore that, too.
No, can I try?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think in terms of, I think probably the supervision and evaluation system, and my sense is not just in this district, but it's not functioning the way it needs to function to really promote, you know, improve teaching, you know? I mean, we have systems of evaluation, but it seems to me that in a district with experienced teachers, one of the difficulties is how do you go from good to great? You know, that you're good. And there's this article by Atul Gawande that was in The New Yorker, and he says, "I'm a good surgeon, I'm really an excellent surgeon, but I wasn't getting any better," you know? How do you get better? And so he hired one of his former medical school teachers to coach him, to go watch him do surgery, which was opening himself up in a way that's kind of, you know, risky. This guy came in and watched him, and he says, "Well, you're doing a good job, but the way you have the drapes when you do surgery, it's hard for your assistants to see exactly what you're doing." And he would have never made that, you know, that's a small improvement. So I think if you have teachers who only see themselves, that they're in their classrooms for 180 days a year, they never get out to see anybody else, they never have anybody come into their classroom to watch them, you know, like in a non-evaluative way, but to kind of say, "Why are you doing this?" Or "Have you ever thought of doing this?" You have a kind of a static system where you kind of can plateau out, and maybe plateau out as a good teacher, but you're kind of plateauing out. So I think in a mature system like we have, where you have teachers who make this their career, the issue is not like the teacher who's unsuccessful, it's like the teacher that's successful, just, like Don Murray had a saying that I'm sure you've heard it, Joanne. He says, "Failures are instructive, it's your successes you have to worry about." Because your successes, then you repeat your successes, and then you keep repeating. And I think that that's the kind of issue to, you know, so that you have alternatives, you think in different ways about your own teaching, because you can fixate and plateau out. Sorry.
No. Good question, Joanne.
You had three red cards during that.
No time limit on this.
No.
So I'm Lauren Selig, I live in the district, and I have two elementary school children. And so I hear what you're saying about teachers. I was a teacher, we did a lot of peer coaching, it was a marvelous tool, and I'd be happy to talk with the school at any time about the benefits of it. My question is, we all know within the community that we have some absolutely phenomenal teachers in the district who do a tremendous amount to continually improve themselves. And the reality is, we also have some teachers in the district where-- And the reality is, we also have some teachers in the district where we're all aware they're not necessarily making the mark. But because of various things that go on with the system, they're still here, despite parents coming in and various things. So what do we do to ensure the teachers who aren't making the mark for all children? Maybe they're making it for one or two children a year, but not for the 17 or 24, 36 children in their class. How do we make sure that they're reaching all of the children in their classroom and not just one or two? And make sure that if they continue not to be able to reach the majority of children in their class on a regular basis, that they don't continue to create that vacuum?
I think that's an excellent point. In medicine, we faced a similar situation, admitting patients to a hospital. Some doctors did really well. Their patients got better quicker, less complications, they left the hospital. And other doctors' patients didn't do so well. And the system that came in place was to kind of let you know where you stood, to let you know that your patient that you admitted for pneumonia stayed for, on the average, eight days, while the norm for the doctors was patients were staying for four days. And provided, in that system then, were sort of, and this is not directly related to teaching, but words instruction on how you can get those eight days down to the four days. And Tom and I have talked about this with teachers, about teachers. Like doctors, a lot of times, teachers are in that vacuum. You're in your own room, and you don't know what the person next door is doing. And I think to try to open up more collegiality, so you see what other people is doing, is very important. I also would really strongly advocate that there really be surveys done of teachers, that kids, when they go through a class, that they can write, and I would encourage it to be constructive, but to write how that teacher did for them, how they connected to them, how they compared to other teachers, both in their subject matter and across subject matter. And I think that kind of feedback is something, I think people want to succeed. And if someone starts getting that feedback that, well, maybe I'm not the top in the math department like I thought I was, that that could be a motivator to get them to be better.
And I think you have to take a look at it from, you know, testing and communication and, like Kenny said, almost maybe like an exit-type interview from the students at the end of the school year. You're going to have somebody that's just going to write something down to complain. Unfortunately, that's just the nature of the beast. But I think if you could look at it from an objective standpoint, from students that could, you know, write something down the last day of school, the next to the last day of school, and, you know, list the positives and list the negatives, and the teacher not be the only one to see it. I mean, obviously, it would have to be seen by, you know, principals or vice principals or somebody within the school system. But, you know, being able to look at that and criticize yourself on, maybe I didn't do that correctly this year, or what do I need to do next year to get better? You know, is it a different book? Is it a different way of approach? But it has to be an ongoing learning thing from the teachers as well, or the kids will become stagnant also.
I think I've used my time, so.
Do you expect elementary school students to write those evaluations?
I think at a certain point, elementary school kids can. It doesn't have to go all the way down into a kindergarten grade, but, you know, at the lower levels, maybe you do bring somebody in to moderate the class and to see how that teacher is performing. I mean, you certainly don't have test grades to go off of in the lower grade, so there has to be another way to look at it and approach it, you know, for the younger kids. But I think getting into a third and the fourth grade level, I think kids are plenty smart enough to be able to write something down.
Yeah, I think programs like reading recovery, you know, you look at the training in reading recovery, I'm sure you're familiar with it, where, you know, you have, where as part of the training and part of the retraining, you know, you'll be tutoring a kid and you'll behind a one-way glass so that people can watch you, and then they ask you questions about what you did. And it's a really exposing and interrogating way of learning, but it's really powerful. So I think that, maybe to go back to what I was saying earlier, and I won't repeat all of that, but that if you have a system where you never, you never observed, you never observed, except, you know, when somebody coming in to evaluate you for, you know, an official, you know, evaluation, and that's all you have, and I think a lot of times, that's all we do have, you don't have any way of kind of helping students, helping a teacher be reflective about what they're doing. So I think that in service where you might be videotaped and watch your teaching, or you might watch the videotape of somebody else, and there'd be this kind of like, okay, you know, you start a class this way, it never occurred to me to start a class this way, you know? Or you finish, you know, you finished the class by summing up things, and I never did that, you know? Those kinds of things, I think, are really powerful, often small things that help you improve. So I think that, I think that kind of hermetically sealed classroom is part of the problem. Amen? Yeah, come on up.
I was going to ask the candidates if they supported the use of student testing, standardized testing, to evaluate teachers.
Comment on that?
I guess, I mean, I think standardized testing, for everything I said, it's here, it's going to happen. And to say you're going to ignore that totally, I think probably is unrealistic. I think what I would concern about is if, in an individual year, given the variability of a classroom, you say, your evaluation this year is going to be based on standardized test. I think if you had like a span of time, and this may go to your question, Lauren, if you had a span of time, and this teacher consistently, your students underperformed for, say, over a three, four-year period, you know, then I think, you know, you should have some observations and probably some sense of, you know, like triangulation of data, you know, why that happened. So I think that maybe something like that. And then I wouldn't have a lot of big categories either, I think, you know, because if you start, you know, having teachers compete against each other, then I think that could be a problem. Because then you could have a real problem in student placement, you know? Because if there's like a disruptive student, and you know, you're going to be tightly evaluated on a test score, and you know you're going to have to spend a lot of time taking care, you know, it's usually a boy, right? You know, I was that boy. But, you know, I mean, but if your evaluation this year is going to be on your test scores, and you know you're going to have to spend a lot of time with this kid who might have a behavior problem, you know, there's going to be some jockeying around to see who gets, you know, it can have, you gain the system. So I think if it happens, it should be over a long period of time, and then you should have a lot of other things that you're doing, like observations, coaching, so that if the teacher's not being effective, it isn't just the test score that's probably indicating it.
Is there another question? Or a comment?
Hi, Carol Dennis from Lee, New Hampshire. So I just want to say, I appreciate this kind of give-and-take forum. I think it kind of maximizes the opportunity for candidates to learn from the voter. And there's, I don't think there's ever been a voter that doesn't like to be heard. So I really appreciate this versus just a question, you know, without the conversation. So having said that, I'd like to go back to quality of education. I currently serve on the Department of Health and Human Services Spark New Hampshire Early Childhood Quality Programs and Services Committee. We too have struggled with that definition of quality. We all come with different ideas to the table. But I think what I'd like to say is that it is important to define quality education as equal access for all children. I think it's important that every child have the same opportunity. And I think that is certainly part of the picture. Thank you.
Very good.
Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Eleanor Taylor from Durham. I was just wondering what role you perceive the arts as playing in a quality education, how important it is, and what you would do to promote it, or whether it would be on the chopping block at some point.
Well, my mother was an art teacher, so if I don't answer this correctly, I'll feel the wrath the next time I go home to see her. I think it goes back to what I answered earlier about having a well-rounded education. I think arts, I think music. I think kids need to have the, you know, the option and the ability to be exposed to a little bit of everything. I think it's very important. A child may not know that he's musically inclined unless he's given the opportunity to be it. I have four kids, and they all have grandma's art talent. And it's something that, you know, they worked on, and it has, you know, something that I think that they'll use throughout their entire life, you know, drawing or sketching or just having fun with clay. But, you know, art, again, music, a little bit of everything, I think it definitely needs to come into and be looked at and see what it can offer the students.
I agree. I think art and music, they're huge and have to be a huge part of the school. And I'd love to see an extension of how kids in our school who have those talents in music and art get to show that off to the community. We're, I think, much more athletically emphasized in our schools. And I'd love to see kids that do music, not just play that concert or two at Christmas time or whatever. I'd like to see much more arrangements, that people get to do that and show off their artwork in different venues than just in the school.
In the community, maybe, as well.
And I think, to go back to the issue of standardized testing, because I think it's connected, that if you start, if you start gauging a school by what can be measured by testing, art falls off the table, because it just doesn't lend itself to that kind of testing. And, you know, I just think, like, you know, one of the most moving, powerful demonstrations of what makes this school system great, I think, was going to see Chicago last spring, and your daughter's performance in Chicago. And I just think it's a thrilling thing that brings a community together, you know? You know, it's not just for, it's not just for the performers, it's for every, it's for us and the audience. And it does something that is really powerful, to bring us together. And I think it could, I'd love to have it reach out to, because so many people, you know, there are fewer and fewer people have kids in school, you know, and to bring them in and have that be a way of kind of showing what we do, so, yeah.
Great answer.
May I?
Sure.
So I'm going to squeeze in a question about equalizing enrollments under the heading of quality of education, because I realize the two are actually connected. So the question on quality of education, what role, or what part do you think the culture of the schools plays in the quality of education? And the equalized enrollment aspect of it, which you're going to talk about at the next board meeting. One idea that's been thrown out is to take the elementary schools and have a K through two, three, four. I'm wondering what your opinions on that would be in the context of the quality of education and the culture of the schools. My answer would be that absent, of course, I would listen to information presented at the meetings, but absent something that changed my mind, I would think that the culture of the school in a K through four or even K through five setting is a really important part of the quality of education. And then to cut it a different way and have K through two and three through four, I would think would be detrimental, and studies show would be detrimental to the culture of the school. I'm interested in your opinions on that.
Whoever wants to answer.
I, you know, we have these set transitions at this point. You transition between four and five, and in this district, you transition between eight and nine. And I think that having that wide range of time that you're in a school really gets you into your comfort zone. I think you get to be familiar with your setting, you get familiar with the teachers in the school. And the converse, the school gets to be familiar with you. They learn what makes you tick, how you learn what works for you, what doesn't work for you. And I think to disrupt that in that short K to two and then three to four, I think that would be detrimental to the education of our children.
I would agree with that. I mean, if you have a kid in school just for two years, you don't, you don't really build much of a connection to that school. And, I mean, I'm in favor, I mean, I think that we need to rebalance the schools because, you know, reasons have already been stated. But that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be my choice to do it. I think that, I think it would, you'd lose the sense of investment in a school and continuity in a school, as Kenny said. And so I don't, I don't see that as, I see that as like creating much more problems than you're even solving, so.
I think it kind of takes the first to second grade, at least, until kids are, I mean, really comfortable in the school system. So I think if you're yanking them out after second grade and putting them into a new system, I don't think it's a good thing at all either. I think it's a comfort zone thing. And, you know, kindergarten first, second, third, fourth, and, you know, looking at my daughter, who's in fourth grade, getting ready to move up to the middle school, I think she's ready for that change. But it had to do with learning and growing within the system and feeling comfortable with the people around her to be ready for the fifth grade and to move up to a new school.
Yeah.
This is a question about, kind of like, the way you see your role as a school board member. I was thinking about the way we talked, we talked about the question of how to handle the students that we're tuitioning in. And, I mean, I'd just like to see you guys react to this, if you guys agree with this or not. Like, I would think the thing to do would be, like, when that situation comes up, and I thought you all gave thoughtful answers, but would be to, like, listen to, you know, like, I see the board as kind of like, you know, deferring to the professionals. And so you've got, you know, Todd, Alan, and you've got Dr. Morris, Morris, and you've got the other, like, the guidance counselors, and they would come forward with suggestions. And so I guess my question is, do you sort of see the role of the board is to be responsive to the professional experts? Or do you see your role is to be sort of pushing forth initiatives, or sort of like both?
It has to be a little, I'm sorry, I think it has to be a little bit of both. It's got to be a little give-and-take, you know, looking to, you know, the principals and the educators and seeing what they think is the way to approach it, you know, discussing amongst the board and, you know, in the community and seeing how, you know, their thoughts and feelings, you know, maybe going to the communities that might be tuitioning in and getting their thoughts and their feelings as well, and involving them instead of it, you know, just being within our own group. I think it's important to involve everybody and, you know, listen to the needs and listen to the concerns and the wants of everybody that it's going to affect, because it will affect a lot of people. And so you've got to, you know, be able to take a look at that across the board and see what's going to be best.
I think that raises that really broad question about the role of the school board. And I think we witnessed this tonight, where when we talk about education, I mean, that's Tom's career. And I defer to Tom, he knows that. And that's not my career in schools. And I think that the school board has hired a superintendent, and we have a leadership team with our principals, and they have the expertise. I see it, the role of the board is to kind of make sure that the philosophy that our community wants reflected is understood by those personnel. But they're the ones who, I think, really know how to implement that.
Yeah, I'd agree. I think that part of our role is to represent the community as well. I mean, the sense, the sense of how a community feels about the school to get a, kind of feel that temperature. So I think, I think it isn't just a matter of them presenting the information and then us going with their recommendation. I think we have a role to represent the community and essentially the values that we have too, so. So, but I mean, I think, you know, having said that, I think that the experience of Dr. Morris and having done this has been, has really been valuable. But I think, I think we have a role and a decision to make, and part of our role is to represent the community and their feeling about what kind of school, what kind of high school they want. So, and frankly, I think that that, in the months, weeks ahead, we really need to hear that more, because so far, the discussion has been space and money. And there's so much more to this decision about what kind of high school we're going to have than that.
You don't have any?
Hi, I'm Jennifer from Durham. I just have a question about how you are going to balance your personal and professional lives with the extraordinary time commitment of volunteering to be on the school board.
I'll take that one. I think it's no different than everything I do now. We implemented a calendar in our kitchen years ago with four kids and everybody going in different directions. We ended up having to implement a color code system just to keep it straight. So, you know, it's, when my kids used to have friends over, and they would thank you, you know, for having them over for dinner, and when there were six mouths at the table that we were feeding, to me, one more was, you know, welcome. So the addition to the school... So the addition to the school board, I do have a busy schedule. And I wouldn't have committed and signed up for the school board if I didn't think that I could handle it, still handle my personal life, still handle my business on what I do from a day-to-day basis, and I'm looking forward to doing it all. It's sure beats sitting around just watching TV.
I feel I've kind of reached a part in my life where I really do have that time, and that's why I've jumped in to be active at this point. Our daughter's away at school. I think I've learned a great deal watching her grow up, watching what the schools, the impact they have on her, and really got to know the district, and have gotten to know the community. And I feel I have that time and that energy now to be able to devote myself to what I think is a huge responsibility. And I think these, I think what's coming up for our community is really, really huge. We've come through some really rough times, but I think that these really big issues really are in front of us now, because I think the decisions we're going to make about what we do with our high school, and if we bring in more kids and how many that is, I think that's going to be one of the biggest decisions that we've made in a lot of years in our community.
And my teaching schedule, which, as you know, the faculty, you know, faculty teach, faculty have incredibly teaching load, and I'm at halftime of the normal UNH schedule, so that I'm teaching, you know, my teaching load is down. And just a short story, once we, when I came to an assembly, my daughter, she was getting some kind of award, and my daughter saw me and then saw my wife, and says, when I saw you, it didn't, didn't strike me as anything out of the ordinary, but then I saw mom, and I know she had a real job. So, so I have a flexible schedule. I like to think I'm productive and work hard at, but I have the time to do it. And I've actually found it enjoyable, I think partly because the people I work with, the administrators, you know, Jim Morse creates a sense of professional excitement, he's fun, you know, there's so, there's been a sense of pleasure and even at times joy in the work, which I think makes it, you know, your question's more about time, but I think it's like how you spend the time, how you feel that time. And, you know, not every minute, but I think it's been, it's been enjoyable.
Anyone have anything else?
I have one more. Came up in the discussion yesterday. Do you guys think it's the proper role of a board member to do things like ride the school buses, sit in classrooms, visit the various outbuildings that the school has, explore the basements, things like, things like that?
I would relish the chance to be invited, to kind of shadow students and to kind of see what days are like. But I don't think I would need to go to that level of riding the school bus to probe or look in the basement to probe. I think that's why we have the staff that we have and to trust in that staff.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to, you know, to, I think to go into a school building unannounced to observe something as a school board member, I think crosses the line. I think that the proper way is to talk to a principal and like, you know, just last week, Jay Richard, you know, I went and said, you know, I'd like to talk with you. And, you know, and then he took me on a tour of the school, and I said, can you show me those things on the roof that were, you're going to cost all this money to replace? And so he showed me those things, and, you know, it's useful, but I think, I think it's kind of how you do it. And if you kind of become an inspector general, you know, and, you know, kind of go into classrooms unannounced, and then use that information to make judgments about what's going on, I think you've kind of crossed the line. So I think it's, I think if you're not in schools at all, I think that's a problem, but I think it's how you do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think planned schedules are a good thing. Walking into a classroom unannounced isn't going to accomplish anything. And I think I would have to agree with Kenny, I would have no desire to ride a school bus. You kind of have to trust the people around you, and you're only as good as the people around you. So, you know, if the school board is doing their job and monitoring and hiring, you know, proper superintendents, and superintendents are hiring proper teachers, hopefully that trickle effect will go down that I don't have to go peek in a basement two weeks down the road, so.
Anyone have anything else?
No one asked the favorite color question.
Ask it, John.
Check our signs.
One thing that wasn't raised tonight, and it got close when we were talking about drug and alcohol use, but I remember at the board meeting when it was presented, and that, this was a huge thing to me, was the emotional issues of kids in our district. And I think growing up in this day and age is really, really hard. I think the pressures on our children are incredible. I think it's reflected in some of the health of the kids in our district. And I think unlike the drug issue, which certainly needs to be dealt with and addressed, but nobody really has good answers for that, I think we can really help our kids by really paying attention to their mental health. We had a tragedy in this district, and we have kids who are going through tough times in our district. And I think as, that's something that we really can work on through our schools, is really making sure the emotional well-being of our kids is being met and kids aren't falling through the cracks.
Anyone have anything else?
All right, so we'll do a one-minute closing statement. Kenny, Tom, and then Carl, and that's it.
Well, thanks, everyone, for giving up all this time tonight to listen. I would really like your support for my Kansas seat. I think that I, a good listener, I think that my profession is one of listening and trying to solve problems and to work with people who might have different ideas. I always will be a good listener, always be honest, always be fair, always want input from the community. I think our schools are really super. I think our community is a great place to raise our kids. I think our schools can be better. And I think we certainly need to watch the fiscal issue and balance those two. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming and staying for so long. This would be very interesting. I've enjoyed the year that I had on the school board. When I started, I wasn't sure that was going to be the case. And if you think back to a year from now, a year back, and I think that what has worked well this year is that a lot of good work was done by the previous school board that I think hasn't been acknowledged. I think that the work they did on energy, they got us started on a really good path. And I think that hiring Jim Morse was a good decision, and I've enjoyed working with him. And he's given great guidance to us, and it's, as I said before, it's been great working with him. And I'm really proud of how cohesive the school board has been, because I think that, you know, you're worried that there might be factions, you know, this side versus that side. And I think we've worked together, been mutually respectful, and, you know, I think we've enjoyed working with each other. So, so I think we've had a good year, and it's been an enjoyable year for me, and I hope to continue that. And I think that some of the issues we talked about, I look forward to working on those.
I guess I'm the new face of probably the area, I mean, only being here a little over two years. I don't think the school board necessarily needs to, you know, be a popularity vote. It's going to be who's going to be the best candidate for it. I'm a good listener. I do well at my business, at what I do on a day-to-day basis from a, you know, budgetary standpoint and understanding numbers and projecting three, five, seven, 10 years down the road on where I do and where we need to be with my company. It really needs to be no different than here at the school system. I do have a very vested interest. Two of them are sitting right here in front of me tonight, and I appreciate them coming through. But I also want to grow some roots into the community, and I think I can bring a lot to the table. Again, being a good listener, being out in the community, meeting some more people, and looking forward to the opportunity. And thank you for everybody coming out tonight, and drive safe going home, and vote on March 12th.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the PTO for sponsoring us. Thank you for everyone coming to the audience, and thank you for wanting to serve our district.
Thank you.
Good job.